Ricky Joe, is your turn?
Thank you.
I would like to call the meeting to order and if everybody can stand for the pledge allegiance.
By pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, Stacy?
Justin Rock.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Karine Dudo.
Here.
David Glade.
Here.
Ricky Joe Hickey.
Here.
Molly Keane.
Here.
Lisa Wheeler.
Here.
Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no changes.
Consent agenda, does anybody have an issue with any of those three items?
I'd like to pull item B.
So item B will now become five Bravo, correct?
Seven A.
Okay.
New business.
We move that to seven A. Any other issues? We have a motion to accept our consent agenda as amended.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so this portion of the meeting will be public comments, so if there's anybody that would like to step to the podium and speak of a non-agenda item, this is the time. We have a three-minute limit, so if we can just keep it close, that would be great.
We can share. Oh, you need one. That's okay. We're good.
Hello, I'm, is this Audrey?
Yes.
I'm Sally Stutzman, and I use Veterans Pool quite often, and I am reading this letter for Annie Nielsen, she could not be here tonight. So, my name is Annie Nielsen. I am one of the water aerobics instructors at Veterans Memorial Pool. I am writing you today to bring to the city's attention that our public pool's locker rooms are unsafe and unsanitary. It has been brought to my attention that funds from the city have been allocated to Veterans Memorial Pool but diverted to other projects in the past. Veterans Memorial Pool hosts swim meets, bringing in swimmers and their families from out of town who spend monies in La Grande. The condition of locker rooms is a disgrace to La Grande, as you can see in the photos. The locker room is also very unsafe. I have sustained injury to my back very recently due to slipping and falling twice entering the locker room from the pool area. The next person who slips and falls and sustains injury may seek damages in excess of the cost of repairs and safety measures. I am the youngest of all the people who attend the aerobics classes. Falling and breaking a hip will be devastating to the majority of anyone in my class. It is of utmost importance that La Grande City Council allocate the funds to correct the glaring safety and sanitation problems that exist today. I will attend the next council meeting, and this was written a month before, but she will be at the next council meeting. We look forward to the resolution of these issues at Veterans Memorial Pool. Sincerely, Anne Nielsen, 910 Wallace Street, La Grande. As a user, also a user of the pool, I agree with what she says. The locker rooms are in very bad shape. They are not kept clean, I don't know what the janitorial situation there is or not. Outside on pool deck, there is tile and cement, even the cement is quite slick. There are many elderly people that use that pool, and there are also the therapy sessions, and those people are often people with special needs, people who have injuries that with a slippery floor, it's not convenient. Anyway, I thought we could bring this to your attention because something needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did know in the budget that there is almost $50,000 dedicated to the locker room and repairs coming up in our budgeting. Yeah?
Yeah, I would suggest attending the public hearing on Tuesday of next week at the library because funding for improvements at the pool are on the proposed budget, and so that would be the best opportunity to raise those issues in support of that funding. So, next Tuesday, six o'clock at the library.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
You go right ahead.
To read. This one was submitted by email from Jonathan Chekis. Dear members of the city council, I am writing to respectfully request that the city consider reviewing the need for a speed bump or other traffic calming measure on Gekler Avenue, particularly in the vicinity of the DHS building. Since the recent repaving of this stretch, the road has become noticeably smoother, wider, and more inviting to fast-moving vehicles. Unfortunately, this has resulted in a significant increase in speeding, especially along the long uninterrupted section of the street near the gas station in Bernie Park. These locations attract substantial foot traffic, including families with children, individuals assessing vital services, and pedestrians navigating between destinations on foot or by bicycle. The combination of increased pedestrian presence, the absence of natural speed deterrence, sorry, and the roads' improved conditions creates a serious safety concern. Many vehicles now travel well above the posted speed limit with little regard for pedestrians crossing to access the park, DHS, or nearby businesses. Installing a speed bump or other appropriate traffic calming infrastructure could dramatically improve safety and reduce the likelihood of accidents or near misses. I urge the council to conduct a traffic study or site review in this area and consider proactive steps to ensure Gekler Avenue remains a safe, accessible, and pedestrian-friendly corridor for our community. Thank you for your time, Jonathan Chekis. I have emailed him, and I also forwarded the email to Kyle, but he just wanted me to make sure that I also wrote it to council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right, since there is none, we will move on to our public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask the city recorder to read the rules of order in its entirety.
These rules of order are applicable to the public hearing for considering an amendment to the La Grande Comprehensive Plan and the adoption of the Goal 14 Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report. This is a legislative hearing, therefore councillor ex parte or pre-hearing contact does not apply. The hearing will proceed as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The mayor will then accept public testimony relating to the matter. There is a three-minute time limit for testimony. The order of testimony this evening will begin with added proponents, those in favor, followed by opponents, those opposed, and ending with those neutral to the ordinance being considered for adoption. The proceedings are being electronically recorded to be converted to written minutes. When testifying, please step to the podium and clearly print your name and address on the speaker sign-in sheet. Please state only your name before addressing the council. Members of the city council may ask questions of the staff at any time. Subsequent to deliberation, the mayor will close the hearing.
We have the staff report, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. So this is the second phase of an economic development effort that started several years ago. You'll recall, we did a Goal Nine Economic Opportunities Analysis that was adopted, I think in 2022, or maybe it was completed, we did it in '24. But anyway, that opportunity analysis identified that the city needs about 63 acres of new commercial land and about 120-ish acres of industrial land added to our city. And the way the state law process works is once you go through that economic opportunities analysis, and same thing with residential, if we were to go through that process, but once you identify that you have a need, then you have an obligation to go through an effort to satisfy that need. And so that's what we're talking about tonight, is that second phase and that second effort to satisfy the need for that commercial industrial land. And so, we got a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to fund this effort, or to help fund this effort, and the process that we went through is we essentially drew a radius around the city's urban growth boundary. You have to go a mile out and look at every single piece of property within a mile, which, you know, jumps to the other side of Island City, and then you start scaling back that mile based on soil types and lands that you can't serve, lands that are in another jurisdiction. So there's a number of criteria, and so we've kind of whittled that down to six areas that were around the periphery of the city's existing urban growth boundary. And then after we've kind of narrowed down, you know, what has reasonable transportation access, where's our city water and sewer, and as well as having some public input, we narrowed that even further down to just two areas that are identified in this report that amount to, you know, a couple hundred acres or so of land in commercial and I think actually in industrial, and then I think a little over 100 in commercial. And so we have some options to satisfy that land need with the lands identified, and that's predominantly around the Business Park for the industrial, and then over by RD Mac for some more industrial, and then there's some commercial a little bit north of that around the Gekler Lane intersection off of McAllister. And so that's the target area for our future economic growth. We don't have any property owners right now that are interested in being added to the city, but the justification is there, and as you now know, it's been about a four-year or so process just to get this far, and that's required in order to expand all these studies and analysis as part of that process to be able to expand our boundaries. And so we have now done the lion's share of the process. And so, should an economic opportunity arise at some point and a property owner is interested in coming into the city or where they sell their property and developer is, we've at least completed the hard part of the process, and then we're just looking at a few months to go through, to expand our boundary, apply a city zone to it, and then we can entertain development. And so, anyway, so we've, you know, made some serious accomplishments, and so at this point, you're being asked through this effort to adopt this report and this justification as an addendum to our comp plan so we can refer back to it when that opportunity arises and use that as our justification to expand. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. So it sounded like when I was reading this that A feels totally fine, E moved a little bit closer to it, and then F. Could we start developing those areas now, or do we have to wait for C, D, and E, B, C, D, and those three? Do we need to wait for those before we can expand, or?
No, because right now, it's areas, I think it's C and E, I gotta find that map that has those listed. Those are the only two areas that are justified to bring in.
Oh, I thought A was, I thought A was too.
A is yellow.
Nine, yeah, it's yellow.
That'll help me get to it faster.
Let's see.
I had one that was a little bit bigger that showed more.
You said, yeah, I'm on 18, but I was gonna see where it said, because I thought it said...
That's a more clear one. So out of all of these areas, those are the six areas that were, that are eligible for us to expand to. They're not justified to expand to, but they're eligible. So after we've gone through all of the criteria, those six areas, A through F, were identified as properties that met the criteria to allow us to consider them. They had the right soil types, they had, they were vacant, they were adjacent to the city. But as we went through, we started looking at the transportation and the water sewer infrastructure and all of those things. Areas E, and then there's, then it kind of spans up, there's a little chunk of D, but we've kind of merged it into E in our analysis, but it's essentially that McAllister. There's Area C, the little triangle of industrial just below it, and then Area E. So those are the areas that we actually have city services that we can extend and serve. And so, through the findings of this and the conclusions, those are the only areas that are justified at this point to come in. If we want to go and look at A, B, D, or F, we can because they're eligible, but we have a lot more work to do, because then we have to go back and we have to do a traffic study and we have to do a number of other things in order to consider those, but...
Yeah, on page 16, it says that B, C, D, and E were excluded. So yeah, I see it, okay. So, do we know any information about A?
Well, A is up by the fairgrounds.
Right.
And that is land that we don't have, at this point, we don't have the ability to serve it.
Oh, okay.
And it's a small enough piece, from a transportation standpoint, it's a little challenging because it's not really connected to the city infrastructure very well, and we don't have a willing property owner. So it's, so we ruled it out for that reason, and we kind of focused on where's our priority, what can we actually serve, and what is the most desirable and economically advantageous to the city.
Great, thank you.
So you probably wouldn't look at those other areas until these areas that you're looking at are filled? Is that correct, maybe?
I think that's relatively correct. I think the nuance to that is if somebody came in, because suddenly you have a willing seller, and you don't have a willing seller in the other area, those are eligible areas, so we could go there. It just means that we're not, they're not going to come in the door and we're going to submit an application to expand our boundary. We're going to have to do a traffic study and a number of other things first before we get to that point, and that's...
With the other areas, you mean?
Yeah, with the other areas. And so there's just a lot more steps to jump through, but if we went through that process, then what we'd end up having to do is we'd end up having to scale back, you know, one of the areas that we preferred, because we only have a deed for 63 acres of commercial and 120-ish of industrial, and we have, I don't know how many, 1,500 or a couple thousand acres identified in all six of those areas. And so, that's, we've identified a lot more eligible areas than we can justify.
But some of these are in the floodplain, too, aren't they?
Those, there's some that are impacted by floodplain, but that's one of the criteria that we've weeded out in our analysis, so very few of them are actually impacted by the floodplain.
Okay.
Any more questions for me?
I was just trying to, at home, I was looking at this and trying to figure out where it was, because these maps are so tiny.
They are, they are, yeah.
It's hard to see exactly, but I figured them out, I think, both of them.
And basically, E was kind of in the floodplain, correct?
It is today.
Today?
So once we get through our floodplain remapping.
Oh, okay.
Most of that will be out of the floodplain, or it may have some 500-year floodplain impacted, which is pretty minor. And so, and there's quite a bit of it today that's not in the floodplain, but there's some wetlands and there's some things you gotta work around in there. But out of that, I mean, there's a couple hundred acres, you know, and if we only need 63, there's probably 63 acres of unencumbered property in there we can work with.
Just curious, we're five years in now on the population study, right? It was done in 2020? How accurate is that looking so far?
I don't know if it's ever accurate. You know, it's only as accurate as the survey and who responds to the survey. And so, I mean, I just think over the 26 years I've been here, I've seen our population go up and down, and so I don't know if, I don't know if the population number really has as much bearing as our growth rate. And so we're at like a 0.4% growth rate, which is pretty slow. And so that influences, you know, our projections as we start looking at what our needs are because, so less so on the population, but that growth rate, when you project out 0.4% over 20 years, that's not much.
Right, I mean, I guess I was just curious, you know, do we have any data, you know, getting five years in, because all of this is based off of those population estimates, right? I mean, if the population doesn't grow, we probably don't need this extra commercial land, we probably don't need a lot of these other things, so...
I don't know if this is so much based on the population as it is based on more of a rate. Our residential land needs analysis has much more influence on population. The economic piece has some other components that get into, oh, it's, I forget what the department is at the state level, but you get into all the economic data when businesses submit their taxes at the end of the year, and you get into like how many employees do they have, and all of those things. So there's other things that influence this besides population when you get into the economic development side. But, but there's also kind of an optimistic element that goes into this. But, but there's also kind of an optimistic element that goes into this as, as we're being successful with some of our economic development efforts, you know, we're gonna, you know, see more growth and we've kind of already been experiencing that once you start getting some of the more anchor tenants and suddenly folks follow. I think where we're gonna find ourselves in an interesting position in the very near future if we continue to be successful is we're gonna have to go back and redo our housing study and figure out what does that look like because all of our base data is, is gonna be shifted.
So, but this will be accurate for a long time if our population and our growth doesn't happen?
Well, it's at least accurate for five to eight years. And so, so while we project out 20, the state is actually, is going through a process right now where they're actually changing rules and they're making you kind of go through these, these steps about every eight years.
Really?
Yeah, so at least on, not so much on the commercial, but on the residential side. And so you're kind of encouraged to, while you project out 20, you know, generally every eight to 10 years, you should be going back and reevaluating this because conditions change. And so, and they've kind of found that on the residential side and so they've actually put things into law on, on the residential piece, but I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, in another five to eight years, we're gonna see some shifts here that we're gonna want to go back and reevaluate.
Well, thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, we will invite public testimony for anybody who's in favor, opposition, neutral? Nope? All right, any more counselor discussion?
I, Mike, I think you did a lovely job navigating at all the meetings that you had to hold with the public. I went, I think I only went to one with the public, general public, and I was quite surprised at how even keeled you were the entire time with some of the comments you were getting. So I just, I hope you feel proud of the work you have done and I want you to know that it was noted that you held your composure and did a really nice job communicating with folks.
Okay, thank you.
And also honoring their concerns. That was really lovely to watch, thank you.
Well, it's important, I, I think, I mean, sometimes I think it's hard to receive comments, you know, when, when you're really the messenger most of the time, but, but I think in this, you know, we, we did a really good job of kind of sticking with, I think, our initial, I don't know if I want to call it a mission statement, but it was pretty much, we're gonna do the justification and we're not forcing anybody to, you know, come into the city that, that doesn't want to. And, and so it's completely voluntary, which is why we're just adopting a report, we're not actually expanding a boundary. Because one of the things that, I don't know, you know, if I've said it enough times here or at all at this, in this forum, but we did an industrial expansion out to the airport, I think it was around 2016, with property owner support, and they've since changed their mind. But they're sitting on, you know, about 300 acres of, of industrial land that is not for sale, that is in our inventory, and so we can't, we can't use it, we can't expand. It counts against us. And so, so part of our strategy moving forward is to not bring inland if we don't have a willing property owner, because if you bring it in and it's not going to be available, then you can't go elsewhere to find it. You're, you're stuck until that person changes their mind. And so, you know, so that's a, it's, it's a hard decision, you know, but it's, but that's why this proposal before you tonight is just to sit on the justification and we're gonna wait for the opportunity rather than kind of force it.
It seems crazy that they don't have a provision of, you know, looking at that again. I mean, if there's, we can't force somebody outside of eminent domain type of situation to give up their land, so the state has no way of going back and saying, hey, look, we did this, but now, now it's an unwilling seller, we gotta revisit this thing?
Yeah, there, there is not. So once you've go, once you go through this process, I mean, I have a proposal that we haven't actually had to implement, but, so we, we'd kind of be pioneering a new effort, but right now, the way it's written is if, if we wanted to go back and, and take that property out of the urban growth boundary, it's already been rezoned from an agricultural zone to an industrial zone, so it has a significant value increase. And if we go back and take it out and, and move it back into the agricultural zone without their permission, then that's a taking and there's a value that we've now reduced their property value and we have to compensate them for that. And so that's, that's something that's written in the state law and so something to avoid, which, as we went through this process, what I was hoping that we could at least pioneer and start was to go in and do some kind of an agreement, a property owner agreement, that puts some kind of a time limit on that, so if they do change their mind, maybe it's five years, 10 years or something, then that gives us the opportunity to go look elsewhere without getting into the takings conversation. And so that seems to be something supported at the state level that nobody's doing.
Right, or have an auto revert, where if they, if they signed on to this and, you know, and led us to believe it was going to be for sale, then, then it does revert back to the former zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
And lose out. That's their, that's their call, you know?
Yeah, so that's that kind of future effort that I was hoping that we would at least be able to explore, but at this point, yeah, since we're not expanding the boundary, we're gonna kind of keep that idea just sitting on the shelf until, you know, somebody comes along.
I think it's smart that we're not expanding, but I'm really grateful that the project has been completed, the research.
Thank you, Mike. Any more discussion need to be? At this time, could the city recorder read the proposed ordinance for the first time by title only?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, amending the city of La Grande Comprehensive Plan Ordinance 3269, Series 2024, to adopt the 2025 Goal 14 Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Analysis and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is continued to June 4th, 2025, at which time the proposed ordinance is scheduled to be read a second time by title only and considered for adoption. All right, we have no unfinished, unfinished business. New business, we moved 3B down to 7A. Could we have a staff report, Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The action before you is to approve a, essentially a renewal of city attorney services with Baum Smith for a two-year period that would have an option to review or to renew for an additional two years at the end of that. The current rate that is charged by the city attorney has been the same since 2015 and he had asked for an increase. And in front of you, you have the draft contract, essentially all the language is the same, but the rate is the only things that have changed. On behalf of the answer, Robert, questions you may have?
My only comment, I think the rate change is, is acceptable and, and reasonable. I just want to put it out there that Baum Smith is, is our attorney, has served us very well, but is also the attorney for the school district and the county. And I just like to put it out there that there's potential conflictive interest and that makes me a little nervous. We've discussed that it's hard to find an attorney out here that can specialize in, in city-type business, but it's, I think that there is potential for conflict of interest.
Now, Robert, in the past, this has been brought up, isn't there a clause if something was to happen, he will not represent either client?
Yeah, when you have a situation where attorneys are representing both parties, there is a conflict and for them to be involved in whatever that issue is, it requires the consent of both clients to acknowledge that they are representing both parties at the same time. In those circumstances, I can't, I can't remember for sure, we may have had one, but if we had that circumstance, Wyatt has indicated that he would not represent either. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about that and that would be a conscious decision at that time regarding whatever the matter was. And usually where that comes into play is when it's something contentious. So as an example, when we're looking at an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the school district or the city and the county, we may or may not have the city attorney to look at those. For the vast majority of those, they're, they are relatively simple. Sometimes I don't even send them to the city attorney because of my level of experience in dealing with those sorts of things. So if we had a situation where we found ourselves in an adversarial circumstance, we would want outside counsel for both of the parties.
Did we adjust the other fees, paralegal risk?
I think, yeah, the paralegal went up. I think, yeah, I think paralegal and risk management both went up.
Yeah, it's been 10 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in 10 years, I mean, what other attorneys would be charging and doing the job that he has done for us?
Right.
And, and to put it into perspective, we don't typically, in an average year, we're not spending more than a couple thousand, maybe three or $4,000 total on legal fees. So, you know, we, we literally do not use the city attorney a great deal unless there's, there's some special activity that's occurring, but for the routine stuff, it's, it's all been very reasonable and, you know, we, we're able to get much of the review done in-house or crafting things in-house and just have him take a look at it for a validation.
And we just pay him by the hour?
We do.
Yeah.
This, I, I did a little bit of poking around, just looking at some average rates. I think this is very, very reasonable and I would certainly support.
Thank you.
With that, thank you for the report, Robert. At this time, I'd like to invite public comments. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this issue? About counselor discussion, does anybody have any more motion then?
I move that we authorize the city manager to extend the contract retaining Wyatt Baum, of Baum Smith LLC as city attorney as presented or presented, period.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody oppose?
No. Thank you.
All right, unfortunately, the Union County Commissioner will not be here this evening. He called, he had a emergency that he had to go to. Staff comments?
I just have one real quick, just a reminder for all of, I've heard back from three of the seven of you regarding the president's regional meeting. I threw out an email, I think last Thursday, Friday, just let me know if you are planning on going or not because we want to make sure, we want to see if there's a quorum or not.
League of Oregon City's president, just to be clear, which one?
But if it's a meeting, would it really have to have, we couldn't have a quorum at a meeting that...
We, we would just make sure to note that you were in attendance.
Oh, okay.
We want to make sure that there's complete transparency that we would have, and it doesn't appear that we're going to.
Okay.
Any more staff comment?
Please.
City manager comments?
Couple things. So the ribbon cutting for the EOU staircase is May 16th. It starts at 5:00 in the evening. The mayor and councillor, Dudo and myself will be present for that, just FYI, everybody can check it out. Currently, our focus has been quite a bit on the budget hearings, which kick off on Monday night at the Colleen John's room at the Cook Memorial Library. You're all cordially invited.
You have a choice?
You do have a choice.
I know.
You certainly could, you know, abstain from attending. And we do have memo of questions number one and that'll go out in the morning. Mary Ann's second iteration will not be contained in that one.
Well, I haven't finished yet, you know?
Oh, I know.
I'm working on mine as well.
Great. So, so please keep the, the questions coming. Those are, those are really helpful to get a thorough response back out in advance. So sometime tomorrow morning, we should finish the first memo with the questions and answers. And then I, we've got another, I think, four or eight questions. A couple of them might be redundant from something that others have already asked that are answered in the first memo. So you'll be getting those. And then last thing I, I wanted to touch on is there were 26 applicants that were received by the first review date for the city manager position.
Oh, wow.
And I think we're at 16 viable that the search firm is doing screening interviews. The 26, there were a couple that withdrew, one withdrew because they took another job and one withdrew because the timeline just didn't work for them. And Richard was pleased with a lot of the applications that came in, so you'll be doing an executive session, I believe, on Monday, the 19th, and you'll have some materials in advance of that, so.
That's how it works.
If we're making good progress on that.
How are we doing with the fire chief?
We're not gonna move forward with that until after the new city manager. I sent an email.
Oh, I know that Emmett has extended his...
Yeah, it was in the same email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What, what was the problem with that?
I'm not prepared to respond to that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to look at that and, okay.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, is there any councillor that has any comments?
I just have a question, Justin Bibby. Because I got here late, are we not doing 3C, authorizing intergovernmental agreement?
3C goes in your consent agenda.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any more comments by any councillor? I have a couple items, that's why I'm letting everybody go first and then I will jump into mine.
Well, we did tree planting on Saturday, planted 31 trees and it was lovely, kind of sprinkled at the end, which was good for the trees. So that was maybe Teresa's last tree planting. So it was nice. There were lots of volunteers from CHD and Boy Scouts and the whole deal. That's all I got.
Perfect. All right, so I will, a few items I just want to cover real quick. The first one is, I do have a proclamation, I always miss this one, proclamation, it's poppy month. Therefore, I am Justin B. Rock, mayor of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as poppy month and May 15th, 16th, and 17th as poppy days and May 23rd as National Poppy Day in our city and urge all citizens to join with me in wearing memorial poppy as together we remember the sacrifices of so many in defense of our freedom. Second item, I dropped a copy on the diocese for everybody. The sheriff asked me, unfortunately, he could not make it this evening, so he asked me to bring numbers that he had so you could see back when he came in front of us. I do see Deputy McCag out there. I don't know if you want to...
This is a drug test, okay.
If anybody had a question for you, would you?
Yeah, for sure. That's, that's the ask.
Does anybody in the council have a question for deputy?
I want to know why we don't have any data newer than 2018.
Deputy, if you want to step up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, this is great, but that's eight-year-old, you know, or seven-year-old data.
For sure.
Which is not as relevant.
So what you see there is the ending of when La Grande and the county were working together. And so after that, it was just Union County doing the drug task force and we were in that position and then we'd be pulled out for staffing issues. And so we just kept our general data in our actual CAD system through dispatch and this data here is specific to the detectives in the drug task force. We kept our own statistics and that's what you see there. So what you would see, what that's essentially showing is that's the last data that we had when we were a joint team.
Okay.
Okay, and what also you see there specifically, I believe it's, I think I have it on my phone, I'll pull it up so I don't have to borrow one of your guys'. From the years 2008 through 2000, I believe it's 13.
14.
13 or 14. The task force comprised of up to four detectives at that time and it was supervised by the city of La Grande. And then shortly after that, I was in there for almost eight years and I had one detective from La Grande with me and... And then shortly after that, it was just county. So right around that 15, 14, 15-year mark. And then we stopped keeping the actual data because there was a board that oversaw the task force. And we had to give these numbers to them on a regular basis. But once it was just the county, we didn't, we didn't do that. We didn't have to, to give those stats to the, to the board because it was just us at that point.
But you do have records because I know that you keep records. Is there any way that we could know what those records are? Because you do have them.
I, I, I could, I could do that. If you guys wanted that, I could ask the sheriff about getting that to you guys. Those are a little bit harder because it wasn't specific to the task force because, and what I mean by that is this, I would work, say I was in there by my, because this happened, I would be there by myself. And it's really hard to work by yourself in narcotics. And so all my data was like interdiction traffic stops. I was just on patrol. I couldn't meet informants because we can't do that by, by yourself, right? So those datas are really blended in with a lot of patrol stats because I was also covering patrol shifts at times. And it was just as staffing ebbed and flowed, I was in and out. And then in the last, say, two years, maybe two and a half years, I would unplug a deputy from patrol to work with me and we would do like a three-month or a six-month stint in there. And so those stats are just, they're intermixed with patrol. But I could probably dig and get you as much as you needed. That I gave to the sheriff just as reference to what would be expected, right? I mean, you could see on there, like in a given year, the amounts of drugs that were seized, like I think one of the bigger years was like 2017, 2018, 40 firearm seized. And that's just, that's just two people in there at that time. And so, yeah, but I could probably get that to you guys if you guys wanted.
Can you just kind of give us a little updated number, just a kind of, you know, kind of a line?
And I would say it's probably going to be pretty consistent because, if you remember, 110 came along, right?
Yeah.
And so those years of stats went way down and that was kind of the tipping point for us, right? But now, since April of '24, the state has reverted back, not completely, I mean, but a, a good portion, to where it is actually effective to work narcotics again in that capacity.
I appreciate, actually, I was just using this more, just as short, to give everybody information that they asked the sheriff for and what she brought to me. What I, like I said, I want to keep it short here. But what I would suggest, maybe next Tuesday during the budget, if you would like to come now that everybody has information, I think the budget would be a better time for questions for you so that way all the budget members get to hear your comments.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
I'll pass that along to the sheriff.
I appreciate your time.
May I ask, may I ask just one question about the numbers?
Yeah, just real quick.
Just, yeah, I was just curious if the numbers, say for methamphetamines, the, the numbers change drastically from your tier, do you think that has to do more with usage or more with your ability to apprehend individuals?
It's ca, it's just going to be casework. I'll just say that if you, you look at the total number of cases, there's a significantly higher number of cases when there was two detectives, when there was actually a lot more detectives. And that is just the type of casework we were doing at the time. There's a lot of law involved in that, but interdiction traffic stops, so those are kind of quick turnaround drug interdictions, produce more drugs than say a six-month investigation that you end up executing search warrants and you get whatever's in that house, if that makes sense.
That does, no, that helps a lot, thank you.
Thank you, deputy. With that, if there's no other comments, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
You weren't late.
Well, no, but I mean, I was late.
Yeah, you were right on time.
Eleven seconds to spare.
You were right on time.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I didn't pay attention.
I know. I thought that was awesome that you put it in my book. That was, that's like, nice surprise.
I think that's where Wiki won the curse.
Yeah. Okay, anyway, I like your hair. Looks really cute.